Oh, shoot. Thank you.
We don't have any extra copies of this for him?
No.
Unfortunately, he's really smart. We'll assume that he's going to be able to figure it out.
I'm just not realizing that.
Yes.
I'm going to call the meeting for June 14, 2022, to order. If you will all stand with me for the flag ceremony. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call rule call?
Councilman Bryson?
Here.
Councilman Coe?
Here.
Councilman Carl?
Here.
Councilman Scaramucca?
Here.
Councilman Trimble?
Here.
And Councilwoman Jester.
Motion to excuse Councilwoman Jester.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to excuse Councilwoman Jester. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We are at approval of bills.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the bills as audited. Would the Finance Committee like to make a report at this time?
$606,749.70, the largest, $397.6369 to Roglands Incorporated for East Pioneer, followed up by $80,827 for Enterprise for Equity.
Anyone have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, the bills are approved as audited. We are at approval of minutes?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the bill, excuse me, to approve the minutes as written. Are there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We are at public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? I'm going to wait 30 seconds on this. There appears to be no public comments, either from our audience or online, or, and so I'm going to move on. There is a second opportunity for public comment later in the meeting. Committees, is there, were any committees, did any committees meet in the interim from last council meeting to now? Okay. We are at old business, at the ADA policy. I don't know where we are, and given, I wasn't here for the month of May, more or less. Where did you guys leave it, at least as an update?
I think it'd be fair to say we left a recommendation to adopt the policy.
Okay. So what I will do with your permission is assess this for action at the next meeting. And if there's any, and I will send it out again, if there's anyone that has any comments or would like to modify any pieces of it, please send it to me and CC, Councilman Carl and Councilman Bryson, so they're in the loop and they can have whatever discussions they want to have.
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to new business, and I'm going to change the agenda a little bit. We're going to go ahead and start with the judge confirmation. I have asked William Stewart, longtime attorney, as well as a longtime, well, I think a lifelong resident of the City of Montesano, to fulfill the term that was vacated by Judge Bates and due to his passing. And Mr. Stewart has graciously agreed to do so. And I need a, and I should let you know that I did not ask for a, I did not open it up to ask multiple attorneys. I chose not to do that because I have every confidence in Mr. Stewart. He has been a pro tem within our court. He was judge at Hoakham, and at this juncture with the city, especially with kind of the displacement of where we were at court, I just wanted someone who was very comfortable with our court system and our court system being really comfortable with him. So I am looking for confirmation.
Move to confirm, second.
There is a motion and a second to confirm William J. Stewart as the judge of the City of Montesano Municipal Court for the term that is outstanding under the former judge. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Any questions for Mr. Stewart? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What? Not now. But we are at the point that if you would like to take your oath of office at this point, I would love to administer it. I did not give you a copy, but I figure you could wing it.
I want to thank you for your confidence in me. This is certainly not the way anyone would want to step into this job. I've got very large shoes to fill. Chris Bates was about as nice a human being, terrific attorney, well-respected by his colleagues, his peers, his clients, the judiciary, and he was doing a great job as a judge. I will tell you at his memorial service, a good friend of mine, Wade Samuelson, a judge from over in Lewis County, came over, he said, "I couldn't believe it, and I had to be here." That's the kind of respect that Chris held, and it's a sad day that I had to step in, but I'm more than happy to fill in, help the city out for the rest of his term. Judge and I can talk at that time. Two years from now, you know, maybe I'm not going to want to keep doing it, and there's lots of other people out there, but I'm happy to help out. And if you have comments or questions for the court, Kay is always open to things. We're already talking about some ideas and things we can do. Feel free to give me a call, you know where I'm at across the street, so thank you.
Do you want to do your oath today, or would you like to do it at a?
Whatever's up to you.
Okay, well, I'm going to get you in. No, I'm good, I'm good. I've gotten this down to half a science. So. Your wager. I, William J. Stewart.
I, William J. Stewart.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
Constitution of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of judge.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of judge.
Of the municipal court.
Of the municipal court.
In and for the City of Montesano.
In and for the City of Montesano.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Judge Stewart, if I could get your signature on this before you leave, that would be awesome. All right, we're going to go ahead and go with the 2021 annual report presentation? CFO, say it. Sorry. What happened? It's okay.
It's kind of like waiting for a clotus or something. Something's going to happen.
Okay, well, I don't have my little pointer tonight, so I rely on our IT guy, Sean, to assist me in this. I'm going to do a little synopsis of the 2021 annual report tonight. Next, please. I need some help doing this piece because I had no idea of all the roles and the council people that switched with their difference. I hope I got everybody right on there. So that is just a list of you all, and our population pointed out was 4,125. We've got an estimate this last week from the OFM, and our 2022 estimate is 4,150. So our population is increasing, which is really good. Next, please. City of Montesano was incorporated November 26, 1883. The City of Montesano reports financial activity in accordance with cash basis budgeting, accounting, and reporting system to the State of Washington Auditor's Office. We have cash basis accounting, and we also report for all of our funds at the administrative fund level, and next. We have the general fund, which is 43% of mostly of our budget, the special revenue funds, which is hotel motel taxes, that are restricted funds and used only for those that we have in our budget. We have capital project funds, which is a street fund. We have enterprise funds, which make up water, sewer, stormwater. And we have the internal service funds, unemployment compensation, long-term care, and so forth. Financiary funds is a fund in the 600s that we have, agency deposits, and we hold money for other agencies throughout the government, as far as fingerprints, building permit state fees that go to the state. We collect them and then we send them in once a month. Next, please. Next, I'm going to talk about accruals, employee accruals. We keep accruals for the city, and it's a part of the liability on us. And for 2021, the employees accruals we had was estimated at $348,915. When you think of employees and their benefits, you really don't realize when they have accruals on books or when they get sick, vacation, holiday comp, whatever it is, that figure that put the city in this liability. In 2020, the SAO developed restricted and committed and unspendable and spendable reporting. These are reporting leftover balances at the end of the year. We have to do it in a way now where you can only have certain fees for restricted and committed for the annual report as far as doing that. Unemployment insurance, which we do our own, we report that. Long-term care for our left one volunteers, which we have two remaining. And then funds left for the agency, fiduciary funds that I said with that. The city also cannot overspend, next, please. Cannot overspend in each fund. That's why we have to adopt at the budget at the fund level. And this graph tells you the expenses and the revenues that were for last year. Did fairly well, even with the pandemic. Sales and use tax, next, please. Had really jumped up the last three years, and I have a graph in the next slide that will show that. We deposit in three accounts. We have Umpqua LGIP, which is the state investment pool, and we get a higher percentage rate for investments, and we'll be investing a little bit more this next year into that fund. And we also have money markets through Umpqua. Next, please. We have one year fund loan that we pay, which I'm sure you all know, it's from ambulance, fire fund to forestry. We have one payment left on that, and that will be done next year. Long-term debt, our liabilities, was down a million from last year, which is remarkable. We have $4,229,103 left for our liability that we owe. Next, please. Our retirement funds count considering for our first two and three, left two employees. We only have the two left two that we, or left one, excuse me, that we take care of. And so in those state sponsored plans, we have to pay our percentage of those. Next, please. The city also matches $40 a month for our contribution pension plans for deferred comp and nationwide, and that total for 2021 was $9,820. Next, please. Property taxes. They're levied once a year. Last year, our assessed valuation went up to $387,925,627. Next, please. This is our balances, beginning and ending funds. It's about $350,000, and 500,000 of it was, 566,000 of it was roughly COVID. So we did great on spending, and revenues and expenditures last year. Very even, even all the way around. Next, please. This graph shows that 43% of the budget is in the general fund. 33% is the water fund, which is part of forestry, stormwater, and sewer. And that gives all the revenues and expenditures for last year. Next slide. This slide is a local sales and use tax. I did a graph showing the three years because it was just phenomenal what I came up with. 2019 was $593,775, the sales and use tax. 2020 was $626,142. And 2021 was $724,806. It was an increase of $98,664 for the year. That is a big increase, and I'm sure it has lots to do with COVID, shop local, everybody's shopping local, more at-home businesses, things like that, but we're seeing the increase this year, too. For 2022, when I first started here in April, we had $52,000 in one month for local sales and use tax. This month was $62,000. So it's still climbing. Next, please. State treasurers distributions. I did a scenario of 2021 and 2020. The only thing was the 566,000 from 2021, so roughly 200 and some thousand of revenues we took in, more from the state funds. Next, please. And the highlights, I wanted to point out, City of Montesano's liability decreased $1,601,308. Phenomenal. Assessed value increased $44,891,382. And the retail sales and use tax, as I said, increased $98,654 in one year. Very good. So we see the City of Montesano as upward and doing great, and want to thank all of you for making great decisions, because it wasn't my work last year for the 2021 annual report, but yeah, it was, it was great to see the work and all the effort you guys put into this, so any questions? Before you do the questions, I just, I'm sure that all of you know this, but just for anybody listening, I wanted to explain that Gretchen has, mis saying it, sorry, has put in a tremendous amount of work, as all clerks/CEOs do around this time of year to do an annual report for the state. So you're seeing a teeny wee snapshot of a tremendous amount of work. And that's kind of like the introduction to what this should be, and she wanted to make sure you guys knew where we were financially. So now, questions?
Give a breakdown of how much of the sales and use tax was destination tax from online purchases versus local?
I can look into that, yeah. I think the estimate was around 20% to 25%.
When did that start? I don't remember.
In 2020, in 2020. I only know that because I've asked that question before, so. Ask it, just kidding, no. It might have changed. Yeah, I will, I will, I will go online and look at that. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are at Martin annexation.
Okay, so what you have in front of you is another councilman, Karen, in the one annexation process. So the boundary board, the county came back to the city with the Martin annexation, and they indicated that the county road department would want the city to take the last grid and then the right of way on North Portwood Street as part of this annexation. And so the, so they were, they wouldn't support the boundary review board's decision to end it if we didn't take that. So we put it in jeopardy of not going through. And so I went up and looked at the loan. It's really in very good condition. It's very narrow, it serves four properties, three of them are developed, it's essentially a driveway, the three properties are more likely, two of them which are in city loans, outside of city loans on the loan. So it is contiguous to the city limits, so it's not like we're extending a right of way up in the county. And I don't really have an issue with adding it to the annexation as we add the right of way for the higher annexation as well. But I am open to questions and issues about this. There's essentially two decisions we can make here. Alternative, one of them is whether the council authorized me to notify the review board that we would include the northernmost incorporated portion of the right of way in our annexation request, or you could decline adding that portion and allow them to decide on what to do.
Is it normal to take a street and we only have, we only own the right of way, it's contingent only on one side, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's contingent on one side.
Is that normal? Do we have to have both sides of the, both sides of the street, or?
I don't do enough annexations to tell you what's normal and what's not normal. I know anytime now, the county's more likely to require us to take any frontage roadway that goes along with the property. And in this case, I really can't blame the county for requesting us to take this because it's 390 foot of a street that is at the end of a city street. And so for them to maintain it or to deal with it, they'd be, they have to go through the city to get there.
Should they do it with MedCap?
Yeah, Med, MedCap is a very short portion of at the end of that, too. And they would prefer not to have that, but they do.
My understanding is that there's no significant benefit to the city to annex this, but there's no significant harm to the city to annex this.
I feel like if we're going to be annexing the property, it kind of makes sense that the streets come along with it, if these are going to be part of the city, especially given the point you made, it's an extension of a street that we already are responsible for.
Yes. What sort of infrastructure has got underneath it?
There is a water main adjacent to it, but I don't believe it's under the street at this point.
It's our water main still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we already have a right of way through there to the water main?
Yeah, it's a county right of way, so it's, you know, it's open anyway, but yeah. This is really a tough issue. It's, it's just one of those, I would have, I would have liked to have gone through this with Public Works Committee first, but we didn't have a meeting this month, so we could have hashed out a little bit of it.
Would you like to do that?
There are some timing issues here. We could delay the boundary review board process as well. So the backstory, just to remind everybody, why, why the Martins want to annex these properties in is because they have a, when they sold their property, they needed to move an easement on to, and I, I'm even forgetting exactly what the conditions are, but they had to move an easement through a boundary line adjustment. Well, one of their properties was in the county and one of them was in the city, and they couldn't execute a boundary line adjustment without having both properties in the same jurisdiction. So it, this was out of necessity for them to come in for the annexation to try to square up some old property issues they have.
Does anyone have any further questions?
Just to clarify, you don't have any concerns about cost impacts for maintaining the street? It sounds like it's a minor amount of chip seal.
Yeah, we would, we would chip seal it one time in the next 20 years, I imagine, and it may even be this year.
I would make a motion that we move forward, including this section of street in the annexation.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to follow the recommendation of, to annex the street along with the property that was previously designated. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just want to clarify, Mike, you are all right with us moving forward on this without Public Works first discussing it?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's up to you guys. I would be.
Unless the chair feels that there's a need for it, then we'll go with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are at, I guess, new council member. We need a new council person.
We do.
Do we?
So many things happen in the month of May. And so I wanted to talk to you all about timeframe, and this kind of actually, since we're talking about timeframes, I also want to talk about the July 12 meeting. I will be out of state, given how, how much effort Pro Tem Trimble did over the past four, five, six weeks, I didn't have it in my heart to say, hey, you want to show up on July 12th? So I want to suggest that, given that it's summer, so it's closer to July 4th, unless there's something pressing that you give me the authority to cancel the meeting, and, but I, we could certainly have the meeting, but you guys are going to have to have a pro tem here to run it. I guess I could appear by Zoom, but it's unlikely that's going to happen.
Seems reasonable and not unusual. I, so move.
Oh, well, okay.
A second then.
There is a second, there's a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to have the authority to cancel the July 12 meeting absent a time-sensitive matter. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So going back now to the two new council member, given that timeframe, what do you guys want to do?
I think it seems a good place to start would be to receive applications until the end of June and then move for action at the end of July. The meeting of the 26th, is that?
Would you guys think about allowing the applications to go through July 15?
I think that's reasonable. I think we want to give people every opportunity to respond.
I think two weeks is enough, but I mean, there's, if we're not going to meet on the 12th, there's no reason that we can't push it out, that extra two weeks.
All right, then I'm going to, the deadline will be 7:15. The meeting on the 26th will be the meeting that will have the presentation. We also have a flood authority presentation on that date, so just FYI for timing purposes. And that moves us into the street food vendor discussion. This is just for discussion. Councilman Trimble and the police chief and Mr. Olden were approached in different areas to talk about a mobile food vending permit and to have food trucks in the City of Montesano. And so I wanted to, this is from Councilman Trimble and, from MTO, I wanted to give you guys a model to think about and to start kind of looking at, because I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do some version of this within, you know, next couple of meetings to start working towards a policy. Even if we don't get it done this summer, I would like to like have something in place as we move forward. But before we, before we do that, I mean, there was a request, so before we do, right now, food truck vendors can be on private, private land, and they
now, food truck vendors can be on private, private land and they can, as long as they have bathroom accessibility for their employees. Oh, yeah, well, yeah. And also obviously they need to comply with whatever laws and rules there are for, for food, handling food. But is this something that interests the council to move forward on? Because it will be a policy that we have nothing, we don't have a policy on food trucks.
Well, given the number of events that we have with the summer markets, festival of lights, car show, it seems like a reasonable.
Well, this is not, so in those situations, a food truck gets a permit to be able to, like a one-day permit. These food trucks are asking for like space. A perfect example would be the one that's outside of Steam Donkey or that has a, like three, four days where they sit on the sidewalk more or less and they sell their wares. And so another example is in Olympia, there's a whole section of food trucks that gather. And that is the request that, that is, a truck would like to be here. And so from a, from a council perspective, I guess what I'm looking for is a policy idea on whether or not this is something that you see as part of our culture and part of our city and whether you want to move forward on it. We don't, this is only for discussion purposes. Take a look at this document, take a look at the rules, and then maybe at the next council meeting, we can touch base on it again to see whether or not it's something that interests you.
I would, I would like to hear from our existing restaurant community and see what their thoughts may be. Obviously, if somebody's on private property, that's, that's different, but if we provide public space, I think it's important that we include our, our other restaurants in the discussion.
I will send out an email to as many of the emails that I have and see their response.
I think that's a good start. I, I just wouldn't want them to be late to the party hearing about it.
Any other comments or thoughts on how to move forward? Okay, please review and then let me know how you guys would like to, any emails that you want to send me would be great. We are now at the flood authority. Councilman Wood was my councilman, who is a, who was the delegate that I had, the, the mayor's, well, depending on the city, the mayors have a, a spot on that authority, the flood authority. The flood authority is a significant entity in southwest Washington and our representation on there is important. My druthers, I have, I'm waiting for, I would like to have someone with a background of, not flood authority, but awareness of, of that type of, of the issues that are raised in those conversations. So I'm looking actually outside of the council to look for a citizen within the City of Montesano. And I don't need your authority or your permission to do that, but I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of what I was doing. And, and I'm hoping that the person I'm looking at will be back in town and I can identify that person in the next meeting. Any questions? Okay. Next is, oh, I think we've dealt with all of it. So we are now at ordinances and resolutions, resolution nine eight nine, six-year transportation improvement plan. This is set for action.
Move adoption of resolution nine eighty-nine.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to allow resolution nine eight nine regarding the six-year transportation improvement plan. Is there any discussion? As summary, it is an update of our current transportation improvement plan that we make every year and has to be done by the end of June. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, we are at the point of the agenda again for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to move to council comments. Councilman Skaramuka, would you like to start us off?
Well, Bill, welcome. You get to continue to work with some of the finest individuals Montesano has to offer. Good luck with that. That's it.
Good luck following that, Councilman Bryson.
All right, that, that seems to be a common thing. I also wanted to welcome our new Judge Stewart. It's, it's very gracious of you to step in in our time of need and fill this position. So thank you very much.
Councilman Bryson, you stood across the street from me.
That's true. But I also, I also wanted to congratulate all the recent graduates, both, both high school and college. It's really exciting when you're out walking around town to see the, the parties going on and the celebrations and it's a, it's a pretty special time of year, so congratulations to all.
Councilman Trimble.
I would do the same. I would welcome Judge Stewart. I've known Judge Stewart a long time, so it's, it's awesome to see him here in the City of Montesano with us, so that's all we got.
Councilman Coe?
Likewise, welcome to Judge Stewart. Look forward to, hopefully not having to stand in front of you, but yeah, working with you. Yeah, and congratulations to the class of, of two thousand twenty-two. God, extra reason for wishing that class the best of luck, but it was, it was great to see that, that ceremony. It was great to see so many people out taking part in it and wish, wish them all the best moving forward. It's great to see the, the street closure aside, it's great to see the sidewalk work going on on McBride. It's going to do a lot to improve safety on, on that roadway. And I would also like to thank the council for their action on the fireworks ordinance that was taken at the last meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Carl.
I'd like to welcome Judge Stewart again. It's going to be a, a good thing for the city to move forward in the, in the municipal court. And I also am very proud of our graduates. I think our school district has done a phenomenal job of producing some excellent students and some excellent future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, a little nod to the bike rodeo that's happening next Saturday. No, we just did it, didn't we? Sorry. Sorry. This Saturday.
It's coming Saturday.
Lost in my, and, and I really am excited about the summer because there's a lot of activities that have been on pause and they seem to be coming back full force, so that's super exciting. And I'm just going to name them because I want them on your calendars. There's the bike rodeo, then we're going to have, Saturday market starts back up on July sixteenth. We have both the car show as well as the nine eight eight fun run slash walk. And the thirtieth, we're going to have the Welcome to Montesano event that we've been talking about. And the last one I want to mention is National Night Out. And I'm hoping that all of you will sign up, your neighborhoods for that event. We are not going to do it in Fleet Park. We would like people to focus on their sections of the town and get to know your neighbors and to host a barbecue or whatever else and have a little bit more, the chief wanted to, to kind of go back to the roots of what National Night Out was, which is getting to know your neighbors. And so, hey, I want to start with that. Second, I need to thank all of you for the month of May. I was kind of not here and I appreciate all the efforts and work that you guys did to keep things running smoothly. Third, thank you Judge for stepping up. It's much appreciated and I know you'll do fine, so I'm not worried about that. And tomorrow, the management team and I are going to go and start on budget two thousand twenty-three and discuss the various nuances of what that's going to look like. We'll be gone all day. And what I would like to do, I don't think it's super feasible to have this expectation, but in case it is even remotely possible, I would like to have a workshop for us in June or July before we hit August, so that you guys can take a look at the priorities and then move it to your committees and ideally have a strong kind of budget starting conversation in September. But I would like to hear your input as to what you want before I provide you with my budget scenario. With that, I have nothing else. I hope you guys are ready for another motion.
Do you turn?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, good night.
Who said nine o'clock? I said nine o'clock?
No. Hey Brett, do you have an address for tomorrow?